Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting of August 26, 2024. Meeting is commencing at 6:00 PM. We'll start with a roll call. Mike?
Mike Dapke is present.
Sam Coby present.
I'm sure you guys are not muted.
Sam Coby present.
Jane Gleason present as chair for the evening.
Julie Marianne present. Julie Marianne present.
And so we have four members present. Carl Schultz will be out tonight. First order of business is the meeting minutes of 12th of August, 2024.
Make a motion, we accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Julie?
Julie Marianne, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. So, four...
Zero one.
Four zero one. Next item on the agenda is discussion of possible vote of two 39-21 Warren QOZB LLC, 59 Main Street. Completion, location of enhanced crosswalk as-built inspections and bond for remaining work.
Evening.
Danny?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm ready for you. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow Carl's model here and have you say your name and spell your last name.
I'm Bill Madden, M-E-D-D-E-N, from JAF Engineering here on behalf of Warren QOZB LLC, 59 Main Street. I don't know, but I prepared a cover letter that talked about the completion of things, marries up with our as-built plan that we did, I think it was last week, and I also have copies of the as-built plan for you folks who have half sizes if it's more...
That might be easier, yeah. We've got the full size here, if it's the one that was delivered on the 22nd. That was what I understood, yeah.
That came in late today? That late today?
Yes, this is the one that came in late today.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Bill.
And half sizes of these as-bills. All right, let's see. I think it was Ken Buckland who forwarded me a memo last week, or late the week before, requesting that we provide an as-built plan and a list of things, essentially a certificate of completion of some sort for the project. As you know, it's not necessarily, well, I mean, I don't know if it's typical now, but in years past and projects past, it hasn't been something that we've had to do with respect to a project. We have no objection to doing it, and we did it in this case, just turned it around as quickly as we could.
The as-built?
Yes, yeah. The as-built and a, you know, an engineer's letter on the completion of the project, what has been done, what isn't done, how it complies with the conditions of approval and things of that nature. So what I did is I prepared a letter that outlined what we, what was done in it, in what was essentially incomplete on the job or might be, maybe better said, is a deviation from the original plans and what have you, and put that together in this letter form. And I also included with the letter the, the original plant, the original decision that was made with respect to the project, the major modification that was approved as part of the project, the variance that was granted by the zoning board of appeals recently that was part of the project, and that was pretty much it, and tried to summarize what took place during the project construction phase. You might recall, we came back a number of times with a bunch, several little things or things that were not terribly substantial, and asked for the planning board to, to weigh in on whether they felt they were substantial enough changes to warrant a public hearing. I forget the exact elements of each one, but I think we came back pretty much each and every time. One of them was like the pavilion where we're gonna put that, the decking out in the back, things of that, things of that nature. So, so anyway, I didn't include that with any written documentation with our certificate or whatever, however we'd like to comment on it in the as-built plan. So essentially, when we went through the job, the predominant thing, I'll just talk about the thing that really wasn't done per the plan, and that is the site landscaping. That, that, you know, we have, as you know, the bylaw requires that we have a professional landscape architect, registered landscape architect, draw the plan, stamp the plan, you know, pick all of the plant material, things of that nature, and we did do that. That was, that was one of the plans in the plan set, I think it was sheet number seven, which, which I believe, is that what I gave you, sheet number seven?
You gave us, this says one of one if you're referring to the as-built.
Yeah, this is seven of seven. This is the landscape plan right here, the half-size. That's it right there, that's the landscape plan, seven of seven. Seven of seven, seven of seven. What did you...
Where are you seeing seven of seven? I'm seeing one of one.
One of one. You're losing it, Bill.
And plan...
Okay.
To accompany variance application.
I see the landscape material down here. My letter referred to seven of seven, which was drawing number seven of the plan set, which was the architectural, I'm sorry, the landscape plan. That landscape plan includes the landscape that was indicated on sheet seven of seven and the as-built conditions. So I think it's...
It's not possible that it's in this set?
No. So anyway, that's, that's what we, that's what we provided. Excuse me. And as a, as a notation in my, in my letter, I noted the, the landscape plan as being the, the first item on the things that weren't done. It was, it is the most substantial on the site. And then I go through and I just outlined the things that, the things that we noted in the field through that, through that site inspection, and they're, they're just bullet pointed on the, on the, on the cover sheet of the letter. And the first thing that we were, were talking about is the Conex box in the sidewalk. Conex box in the sidewalk is gonna go on the far north end of the, of the project site, and that was not constructed, is not constructed at the present time. So we, we noted that. There's the need to add stop signs at the facility entrances, and there's two entrances, one on the north, one on the south side. So we call for stop signs to be located at each one of those, at each one of those exits. Those were not installed, we're planning to install those. We're planning to do all these things that are, that are listed here.
In two weeks, Bill?
I don't think the landscape can be done in two weeks, to be honest with you. There, there is some landscaping on the, on the site right now, but to the degree that's noted on the plan, it doesn't, it doesn't quite match up to that, but there, there is landscaping on the site. These other items are relatively, I think, modest in nature, so I would see that there's really no impediment to getting those done in, in a, in a week or two. There's a handicap parking sign in front of the handicap stall. There was just a little bit of a mix-up as to where that parking stall was actually to be located. So one of the things that were done was the detectable warning pad was relocated, the, to the proper location, the curb cut was in the right location, the paint markings were not quite right, so that was corrected, and that has, that has been corrected since the time we did that inspection. The deck on the east side of the pavilion was modified. This is the deck that we're talking about here. We had discussions that went back, we were, at one point in time, we were gonna put the pavilion a little bit closer to the deck. The pavilion was, I think was actually going to interject into, into that no-activity zone or the prior filled tideland zone. So we went and we moved it at one point in time, I think we came and talked to the planning board about that. We came back and, and actually put it back to where it was originally. But the deck is a little bit larger than what was proposed, nothing terribly substantial on that expansion.
That's all based on pushing the pavilion back?
And I think that logistically, constructing it on the sides, there was a concrete wall that formed a piece of that boat ramp, so to take advantage of that foundation, I think it might have expanded out to rest on top of that concrete retaining wall, and then we could frame it back out from that, back toward the, the shoreline, so that's what, or the landward side.
Is it level with the walkways on either side, or is it a step up?
No, it's, it's level with the walkways.
Okay, good.
On the, on the water side, there is a one step up.
Okay, but at the, at the walking along, the walkway that runs along the river?
Correct.
It's flush?
No, it walks right along, there's a one step up there, and on the parking lot side, it's a, it's an even walk-in.
So the pavilion floor, the, the slab on the pavilion floor is at the same elevation as the, the deck?
Mm-hmm.
And that's one step higher than the walkway?
Than the concrete walkway.
The signage for the facility, there's no signage installed that identifies the name, the name of the place. That has not been, been put together as of yet. At the time I wrote the letter, the dumpster enclosure was not constructed. I think that that might have taken place, at least I'm told, I didn't see it myself, but I'm, I'm told that it was constructed over the weekend and perhaps even as late as today, they were working on it. That was approved by the zoning board of appeals, a variance was granted for that. The concrete slab that's noted right here, it's just adjacent to the far south end of the site, it's, it's noted as dimensioned, I don't think it has the dimension of it noted on the plan, but as far as the, the drawing of it, it's to scale and as it exists.
Yeah, this is proposed nine by 30 dumpster enclosure.
Okay, those are the words that I couldn't see.
Yeah.
So anyway, that, that's constructed as far as I know, but I have not witnessed it myself. In front of that dumpster location and up toward the back of the building with that small loading areas, we had originally noted that on the plans to be cement concrete, it's, it's paved with the Tuminus concrete, so I, I made a note that that area is just a different surface than what we showed on our, on our drawing. There's stairs up on the water side of the building, I think that we showed the stairs originally on the, on the east side of that building addition. It, they've been added to the, to the south side more than the east side. I mean, the stairs are there on the east side, but the, the upper landing and a small little access deck from the egress door, which is a little further down on the, I think the egress door is closer out of the building, is on the, let's call it the westerly most side of that addition, and that's a deviation, that is a deviation from the plan. It's falls, it does not fall within a side yard setback or rear yard setback, so it's outside of, it's outside of those two areas, but nevertheless, it does, it is a small modification to the plan. Some of the finished curving, particularly here at that main entrance, there's some, around that island, we had an island designated on the plan with raised, with a curb, six-inch reveal and a raised island. I think when the fire department went down there and did their inspection, they asked if that could be a flush curb and a flush island as opposed to the way we had it. We had it originally as a planting island, and that was changed to be a flush island to accommodate what the, what the fire department was, was talking about. But those were, those are the major changes, I think that, you know, they're, they're not terribly significant, but they, they do constitute a change. Another item that was, that was just pointed out was the inspections from Allen and Major. There's four inspection reports that they sent to us last week that I included with the, with the package of information that we're providing to you, and I can't really speak directly to them, we didn't do the, we didn't do the inspections. Granted, we were there quite often during the phases of construction. If there was something that, that struck us as a little bit different, a little peculiar, we, you know, we advised Mr. Warren of that, and he would, he would make the corrections, but things like the tack coat for, between the top and the binder, I don't know if that, if that took place. Just looking at the dates on those inspection reports, seemed like there might have been a misfire on a date or two, but the photographs surely were representative of what took place out there, and Lawrence Lynch was the company that did the paving, they did a pretty decent job, I would say, it did, it did work out fairly well. And those are, those are what, what I had on the, the changes to the plan. I know that we, Paul Turner also requested us to provide a finished construction elevation certificate for the facility. We had provided that previously, but we had checked off that the site was still under construction because it wasn't, it was not complete at the time we did it. The elevation of the building wasn't changing, it was accurate, everything was about the same, so the major change in that was really reflective of changing the, changing the elevation certificate title to finished construction. So those were the, those are what we had for the, for the major modifications to the
So actually, one of the, one of the things that I think the certification from your office was to cover was if there was anything that Mr. Cordero was unable to see firsthand as to whether things were built according to the plans, and just wanting to get somebody with credentials to sign off that it was done appropriately, so that was...
I'm, I'm able to do that. I did not, I did not know that was a request, but I'm happy, happy to do it to the extent that I can on certain things. You know, we were there when they excavated out sub-suitable material for the, for the base for the roadway, or driveways rather, you know, we saw the gravel that got put in for the roadway, we saw how it was compacted, how it was put together, things of that nature with respect to drainage. There were some images and photographs that Cordero pulled together in his, his outfit for the drainage. That all looked reasonably close to what we were talking about. The geotextile fabric between the stone, infiltration stone and the subsoil adjacent to it, that was all put in place, the, everything, everything was pretty much done. There was a little bit of relocation on some of the utilities with the drain line, the electric conduits, water lines, you know, the sanitary manholes were installed, the oil, the grease trap for the kitchen, and the grease trap for the Conex unit, those were, those were all installed, so they had to be, I think they had to be inspected by the planning, not the planning board, but the plumbing department, not 100% on that, but, you know, we did see them go in, they are installed down there, and, yeah, and everything was pretty, was done fairly well.
And all those other items, Mac White was there all through that whole thing. He was, he was my engineer on-site daily.
Sadly, we don't have him to...
I know, I know.
...talk to him, very sorry about that.
But they were fortunate enough to have at least some full-time representatives, an owner's representative in a...
Yes.
...some way, shape or form on that site during construction.
So I guess I'd like to hear from Mr. Cordero, hiding behind the drawing. Just, so we have not, we, the board has not had the benefit of being able to comb through this document that you sent out, Bill. We haven't had a chance to look at it. It arrived at 4:29, I think, was when the email came in, so it was late. So we haven't had a chance to look through that. So the reason Mr. Cordero asked if he would come and talk to us a little bit was to just get a sense from you of what you did see and, and how, how thorough you feel like your observations were of, of, you know, whether you had the opportunity to be on-site, because I know it's not in your backyard...
Sure.
...to see 50% of the, the install or 90%? I don't know.
Sure. No, I'm happy to relay to the board what we did on-site. It's important just to go back in time that the project started earlier than, it was a project that predated Allen and Major's involvement.
Okay.
And there was some initial confusion from the contractor as to whether or not he needed to be calling for inspection, so certain amounts of work were done before the initial call through the planning board for us to go out and take a look at them.
Yep, that's a process.
I met with the applicant's contractor on-site, we walked the site a number of times. As Bill referenced, we saw what we thought would be critical path items on-site, installation of drainage, installation of sewage, sewage disposal systems, grease traps, sewer lines, et cetera, the gravel preparation for the subgrade for the pavement and the binder. We also talked a great deal about what was being relocated and where and why, and making sure all of that was in line with the plans that you all and then ultimately the zoning board of appeals approved. So I wouldn't say that we were on-site 100% of the time, for sure.
Yeah, for sure.
And I would say maybe, maybe it's 50%. We did not review any of the wearing cost placement, we weren't notified of that, so as Bill mentioned, we can't speak to whether enough tack coat went down or whether all of the curbing is exactly specifically where it should be, because those went in at a different date and time. I will say that what we saw was, was well-constructed and was in accordance with the plans, just reserving that we didn't digest the as-built in great detail either, having just received it.
Yeah. Well, and Bill, that's where I think that your sign-off on things is gonna be advantageous in, in sort of confirming that what was drawn is what's there, and that it's all constructed properly and all that, so. So, do you have any...
Yes.
...comments that you want to add?
So Bill, you're saying that these are the only things that aren't done yet? Or the first event is two weeks from tonight? So you, you believe that everything will be done except for the landscaping?
I don't see anything other than that as being a problem, getting it done in two weeks. These are not...
There's an event two weeks from tonight?
Yep.
Okay. What are your feelings on the landscape completion? I mean, assuming that it's not done when the first event is held, what kind of timeframe do you think you're gonna need?
Well, I'm thinking that since it's late in the year, that the, the stock, just material stock is likely gonna be in short supply, so I can't speak directly, directly to that, but, you know, if the material is in short supply, then we wouldn't, wouldn't be readily available and couldn't get done. I think we should, we should look into that, figure out who's gonna do that work and see what the availability is of that material, and be in a better position to answer that. I think...
Most of, most of it is available, Bill. I worked on it all day.
And I, I would opine that it's a good time of, or a better time of year than two months ago to be planting.
I've been pushing Mike, and Mike's and Danny, if you start planting this stuff before September, you're out of your mind.
Exactly.
You're gonna lose it all.
So it's got a better chance of survival if you're doing it in September? But your point is well-taken, but I would think that it would make sense to get at least as much in as you can just to hold the site in place.
We have quite a bit in place now. We've been piecemealing it nearly milli, because Mike's gotta run, and the passageways are all there and everything, he's gotta run sprinklers up along the road, so that stuff has a chance to live. But the 900-pound gorilla in the room is the trees. Those trees aren't gonna work. Every tree that was specified, and this has nothing to do with my friend Bill Madden, the guy that laid out the trees, and I didn't catch it, and, but every one of these trees will grow between 50 and 120 feet high. They're all recommended not to be planted near roads, because the root system will destroy. They dump tons of leaves, and they got a, they got a leaf spread, these got five trees here that have a limb spread of 40 feet. So the folks at British Landing was no part of that. They don't want dumb trees dripping on their cars, they don't want a ton of leaves a year coming off each one of those trees to be picked up and cleaned up. And then out in the front of the property, I think Dave Menard wrote a letter, because I had Dave come down and say, "Dave, what do I do?" He said, "You just gotta go talk to them." But they, they specify these big trees, and I wanna say it again, nothing to do with JAF. I don't hold them responsible for none of this. The trees are directly under the power line that are already sagged down low, and the trees are gonna come in about 12 feet tall, and they're gonna go four feet a year, and I called, I called Eversource and they said, "No."
Yeah.
They said, "You can't put those kind of trees under that power line." And some places between us and the road, there's less than five feet, there's less than four feet. And Dave said, "You just can't, Danny, you gotta figure out how to get some planting in here that looks good." But he said, "You gotta know, anything you put in here, you're gonna lose a lot to the snow every year, because we can't control where the piles are throwing the stuff." So if we can come to an agreement on the trees, I don't see any problem with having it all done easy in two weeks, but...
Danny, everything but the trees?
What's that?
You say everything does but the tree.
Yeah, because...
Sorry, everything but the trees.
Everything but the trees. Now, but we gotta talk about this a little bit more. In the back, there's also designed a berm with a three-by-three spread, and it's right in the middle of our yard. I had made a deal, I don't know if anybody here from British Landing, so I can't see behind me, but I had made a deal with British Landing that I was gonna help them reslope their bank on the other side, because they got well hard again today, and it's, it's strictly their land that's doing it. And the way Bill designed my property, there's drainage and everything going back to the big drainage system that he put in the front, which I tell you works like a charm, but there's no way to get rid of their water. So by British Landing saying I could go closer to the fence, and we worked together great as neighbors, I told them I would come over at our expense and we would reshape their hill, match the stone that they want to use, and help take the curse off that bank. But if I put the berm in now the way it is, it kicks more water back on me and a ton more water over on them, and they figured that out real quick today when they saw the site. So I told them I was gonna ask you guys tonight if we could just level that off and clean that up and plant it with grass and spend that money on better fencing, straightening out their hillside and getting rid of that problem, and then move forward. Josh was out today and saw it, and Ken Buckland came out today and saw it, and you could see the damage that happened over there today from that hellacious rain we just got today. But we, but there's, there's, I think there's three trees back there that will go to 120 feet high in 12 to 14 years. They grow, they grow like crazy, these trees, and I say probably 30 years, but they said within three years, you'd have a 40-foot tree there from where it's starting, three to five years. And they already have four big trees there. So they said today, they said, "What's wrong with these trees?" I said, "There's nothing wrong with those trees. They've, they've proven they can survive in that lousy dirt that close to the water, and it, it leaves the money to take care of a big problem that those folks have," and they have been great neighbors. I mean, that's all there is to it.
Mike, do you have anything you want to add?
Julie?
Julie, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I just, I'd like to eventually hear from Ken on this, on his, what he observed, and Josh as well.
Well, I guess I'll, I'll start...
Well, I guess I'll, I'll start by saying that, uh, Josh and I have been out to the site today to view it. But, uh, it's quite correct that the, uh, the major work on the, on the site has been done. What remains is the landscaping plan and the, the grading associated with the landscaping as well, too. Uh, the, the trees of, of potential problem are red maples that, uh, as you know, can grow pretty fast and pretty tall in the right, in the right conditions. One option you have, if you want to provide a temporary, uh, release of this property, is to put up, have them put up a bond for the landscaping work, the remaining work that has to be done, as a way to, to, uh, hold them to the plan. But it seems that the plan should change somewhat as well, too. So, I think, uh, uh, it's appropriate that you, uh, do minor modification to the plan and approve the changes that have been shown there. The only change that, uh, that, uh, wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't remain would be the conex box, if that is still gonna be put onto the site, uh, that, uh, but that, that doesn't have, uh, that's more of a, a, a building code issue than, uh, than the site plan review issue. So, uh, just note that the conex box hasn't been put in as yet.
So, you're recommending Bill does a, a minor modification?
Minor modification, yes.
And Danny represents that he can get all the work done by two weeks from tonight, except for the trees. Now, can we go as far as to say, "We have a meeting that night anyway," uh, but to the event is earlier in the day?
Well, and, and there are things that have to happen aside from us, like the certificate of occupancy.
That's the main thing right there.
Right.
Agreed.
And on the certificate of occupancy, the, uh, the building department is looking for the sign-off from the planning board that, uh, it's, it finds the, uh, the site plan acceptable at this time, and then they can proceed with the, the code review that they need to complete to, uh, issue the certificate of occupancy.
So, it seems to me that there are a couple of options.
I'd like to hear them.
Uh, one is to somehow come up with a, a bond amount to cover what's incomplete, including the landscaping, because there is still stuff that's incomplete. Even if it's ongoing, it's still, technically, it's incomplete. The second option that I see is that we have, we take, um, some time to be able to read through this and, um, we do a, an off-cycle meeting remotely just for this project that gives you some time to finish things up. But I, I think that if we continue it to the next meeting, it's when the event's going on and it's too late.
That's it, exactly. And we've sold, the two-hundred-and-fifty tickets are totally sold, and they just printed another hundred. And I said, "Nope, I can only sell fifty more," and they're sold. So, either we can come to a terms, I gotta sit there on that porch that night and hand everybody their money back.
So, those are the two options that I see. The, the trick that I see with the, the bonding, uh, option is that we don't really have a schedule of values to work from, to figure that out tonight.
Well
I mean, we may still end up with a, but we'll probably still end up with a bond even if we do this off-cycle meeting to
I don't mind about the bond, but the bond will have to be in a shape as a certified bank check, because there's not a time to get a bond. If I still had ANW, I could get a bond way in the millions with a phone call. I don't have ANW anymore, so I'd be starting from scratch, and that would probably take two months. So, when I did Swiss Beach, I bonded that whole job with cash, because no one would touch it. It was experimental, which it worked out perfect, I might add. Saved a ton of money for the town, and, um, that, that works fine, and I have the money.
So, you're prepared to do a, a cash bond?
Yeah.
Even if we do that in, say, a week? The problem with a week is that it's a holiday.
Right, now, but here's the thing, and it's the nine-hundred-pound gorilla in the room. We gotta determine on these trees, because I'm not giving up one dime of my money if you guys think I'm planting those trees, because that ain't happening.
Well, it sounds like there are a number of issues that make it so that it's just not practicable.
Yeah, it's, the trees are unpractical, and the raised berm in the back, because that puts a burden on me and British Landing. It's, I mean, we, 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 we put the scale on it today with British Landing standard, and they're like, "What the hell?" And I said, "Well, obviously, the guy that did this work did not come and look." And I'll say it for the third time, that was not Bill Madden. He didn't come and look. If he would've come and looked, he'd realize there's no way you can do that there.
Yeah, so I
It's our whole backyard away, it's gone.
So, I, I think that the landscaping needs a bit of a second or however many look.
Yeah.
And bonding that would cover the landscaping, and then
We, we, I talked to two landscapers about it today, and they both said between twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. So, then I cross-referenced it at Lowe's, Home Depot, and two private places. So, everything minus the trees to buy would be forty-five hundred dollars. I talked to a man today from New Bedford, said he could do every bit of that work and have it done in a week for five thousand dollars. So, and I know that sounds low, but three days ago, I was told, "Nobody in the world can insulate that whole basement and make it fireproof between now and the nineteenth, I mean, between now and the ninth." Well, MAP did it in two days.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's totally doable.
So, does that make sense to, to meet again? We've gotta figure out a day.
Hmm, definitely we need to meet, meet again.
And, uh, see whether, um, the Wareham Media, is that the name of it now?
What's that?
Yes.
Whether we can do a remote meeting, um, after the holiday, after Labor Day. Wednesday or Thursday? Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, I would think.
As early as possible.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, Tuesday, I know, Selectman, fourteen days. You have enough time to advertise?
Uh, it's two days to advertise, apparently. So, if we, if we pick Tuesday, there's enough time to advertise before we need to.
What, what date does that bring us up to?
So, that puts us at, today's the twenty-sixth, so the Tuesday would be the third of September.
It's not gonna work. I can't, I can't buy the booze for the bar till Judy signs off. Judy will not sign off till you guys sign off. That leaves me six days to do all that, and then the lawyer's gotta have some time to finish his end of the deal on the liquor licenses and stuff, which he said that's only a day or so, but now we're down to three days. We still don't have a stock bar, we don't have anything.
What about extending the event?
It's already happened once.
I know that, I bought tickets. I, Danny, we're all trying to make this work, but time's not gonna work.
Yeah.
I mean, if you can postpone it a week or, I know it's been done once before. I don't think we can get this done in two weeks.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't think you can get what you're promising done in two weeks.
Well, I do, I do believe I can. I built the building in one day. We'd, we'd have the roof on it today if it hadn't started raining. We built it yesterday. But I just hate to do that.
But then, when we're done, it needs to go to the next step. And that's not gonna be an easy one in a day or two.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
The occupancy permit, and when we're done, the heck, you have to go that route again. And that's beyond us. I mean, we're working, we're working up hot a time now to get our work done, and we're trying to get it done.
Well, and I, I don't, this, I suppose, is not an issue for us, but to get the occupancy permit there, and maybe some of this is already done, but there's the electrical inspector, the plumbing inspector, the gas inspector, the board of health, planning board, well, planning boards, us, uh, historic commission, conservation commission, fire department, water department, sewer department. So, those are all the
They've all signed off.
Everybody except the CFO and us?
Everybody has signed off on it, that you just went down the list. Everybody. They went through, and they went through all the safety and everything last week with the inspector, that all passed. They're going tomorrow at one o'clock to do the final inspection on everything, and we know that's gonna pass, because George has gone over it with us a couple of times. That's all gonna pass.
Yeah, so we're on that list, and we haven't, so, um
Right.
Want to try?
Try what?
Make it work?
Well, let me ask this question. How much of a bond would you want to make it work, minus those trees? Because I don't care.
Yeah, that's where I, we've got this list that we, we got at four-thirty.
Right. None of us read.
With no prices against them as well. Ken, your thought? I mean, I think that we, we need itemization to be able to consider the bond. I don't know how else
You, you can go on a lump-sum estimate as well, too.
Yes, yeah, we could do that as well.
And if he's got, if he's got a bid, then you can take that as, as, as a value. Add twenty-five percent to it, and that's your bond.
Yeah, agreed.
Add twenty-five percent to what number?
The estimate, lump-sum estimate, Jay.
For, but for this list of work on the front of Bill's letter? But we don't have that broken out anywhere. So, I'm not sure
I was talking about the landscaping. I, I didn't
Oh, sorry.
I could, no, the
But the rest of it, I mean, it's such a, it's a moving target for us.
Now, one thing we didn't talk about was, uh, the crosswalk. That, that's up and operating.
That's
You can go push the button right now and walk across the road up there.
Okay. Yeah, that was, that was one of the items, was the crosswalk.
Pick a number. Pick a number, add thirty-five percent. He's gonna do cash.
I don't have a number in mind. I mean, do either of you have a number in mind? Any of you have a number in mind?
Twenty-five thousand? I think that's a reasonable, reasonable amount.
Sorry, guys, I can't hear, too many nail guns.
Twenty, twenty-five grand, that'd probably be, cover everything.
I agree with Mike. I totally agree with Mike, and I got the same number right here. And I worked on this all day.
Perfect, Phil.
So, let's say
I think you
That's twenty-five percent.
Mixing apples and oranges on the list that's on the front page and just landscaping.
Right, so there are two things that we're, that, in my mind, we're talking about. One is landscaping, and two is, is this list.
It's everything.
Right, and I, I'm sympathetic, but if they're going to modify the landscaping plan, then that's another layer of a moving target in terms of estimating what that bond amount is going to be. So, if he's, if he doesn't want to plant the red maples, which I agree, those would be problematic, we have to reach conclusion on what is going to be planted, so you can see a, a bond value.
I'm inclined to say that it's two bonds.
Well, what if we said that we're gonna go with dwarf fruit trees or dwarf fruit flowering trees, anything that's not gonna get up in those power lines and wreak havoc with the road forever? If we did that, I would have the whole thing done in a week, because I know right where to go to buy that stuff.
You're saying everything on this list? We, we're getting confused. There's the list, and there's landscaping, as Phil said.
Yeah.
Bill, were you gonna say something?
Yes.
I, I, was that to me, Julie?
Was that Julie?
Yes, it was, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think that I, the way I wrote that, it's the, it's the work that's shown on the landscaping plan. So, there's going to be a couple of other things in addition to the plant material. So, there's fencing is noted on that plan.
Right, that's where I see this list as being sort of hardscape stuff, and then there's the landscaping that is
I just wanted to be clear on that, that that's why I noted as the plan, because the things that need to be done are noted on the plan.
Right.
Well, I don't have a problem with two bonds. The only thing I have a problem is, is Allen not having that party. Allen's the only reason that building's standing there.
But, you know, I don't think you need two bonds, honestly. I think, can't you just do one bond and pay it down when you complete it, complete a task?
We could do that. I'm, I, I guess I'm just thinking it's nice, here's a package, this is, this goes to the list, and here's another bond, and that goes to the landscaping, so that it's, it's a clear division between the
Where's Lucy, Lucy, does it gonna get tonight?
I, I don't know.
Or, or we assess as we go, what is the remain, value of the remaining work and look out at that point, if we have a lump-sum estimate, just so we don't end up short if there's an issue.
Yeah, I suppose that's right.
We need a number.
Yeah, we need a number.
If, if, if I may, I mean, we're happy, we're happy to work and get a number together. We could do it as quickly as tomorrow. We'll work with Bill's team, we'll work with Danny. We'll put it all together. That's not the issue, as I'm hearing it. I still think the timing for you to hold another meeting to agree to that number still isn't going to work.
It, it won't work.
If, if you can do the number tomorrow, let's do a Zoom tomorrow.
Well, we can't, we gotta advertise it. We need forty-eight hours to advertise.
You can have a meeting Thursday night.
We could do a meeting Thursday night. I'll be doing it from the car, but
Well, I think we decided we'd do what we know. I'll be out of town, but I can certainly join the meeting.
And I don't, Carl's not back yet, so
Are you gonna chair from the car?
I'm gonna chair from the car, I guess. I'm gonna car seat in the car.
And Thursday's fine for us, too.
The only piece I couldn't have done in that two-week timeframe is the fence between me and British Landing. That's a lot of work.
Well, the, the fence between you and British Landing, I think, is kind of up in the air at the moment, tied to revisions to the landscaping
It is.
Based on what you saw with specifically today's rain event.
Exactly.
So, we regroup. Phil can do his in a day or so.
We can regroup on Thursday.
Do a cash bond. We meet Thursday to approve. We need a
Could you meet Thursday afternoon?
Ken?
Could you meet Thursday afternoon?
Yeah, Thursday afternoon, over there.
Like four o'clock or something?
Yeah, sometime earlier, yes.
Okay. It's fine with me, but I, I defer to my other members.
Uh, four-thirty or five would be better for me, if we can do that. I've got something going on in the day, and then I jump in the car.
I'm good, Mike?
Ken, it work for you?
Yes, it works fine.
Okay.
Okay, Phil, can you do your magic?
Sure.
Do the bond, it'll be Thursday. If everybody does what's their thing, then we can maybe do it Thursday, get it done.
Yeah, and if we have it all done, whatever that, that comes up, I'll have the bond.
Yep.
And the bond will be a certified check, not a bond-bond, it'll be.
Yep, yep.
That's fine.
Are you, are you planning on doing it, uh, fully remote or in, in the room?
We'll do it fully remote, I think.
I think need, I, we think we need to be together.
If the chair is, is out of, out of pocket.
Correct, you're correct.
Say that again?
I think if you're out, you, you should do it by remote.
Right.
If you're not present in the room.
Yeah.
I disagree. I think, given what's happened tonight, that'd be hard, remote.
Okay.
So many move, that's my opinion, because so many moving parts right now. I just think they'll have to be together, my opinion.
Okay, well, I, I will be remote, so maybe somebody, maybe, maybe Julie will end up chairing the meeting.
Other than remote.
Matt, Matt, sure. The only reason I ask is because, uh, school committee has this room booked, uh, for five-thirty P.M. on Thursday.
So, if we did it at four-thirty or
Four.
I don't know if I'll be available at four. Four-thirty, yes. I could be back by four-thirty.
It has to be, it has to be.
Yeah.
You okay, Bill, with that?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Phil? Danny? John, we're good?
Fine.
As long as you guys get it done before school committee, then that's fine.
Josh?
Okay, I'm out of town, so I have to figure out how to get back, if we're not gonna do it remote. Okay.
Well, she could be remote. Well, she could be remote. I was just talking about.
You could be remote, just as you are now.
So if it's at 4:30, then I'm here and I will be here in person.
Okay, if this whole group.
We can certainly do remote. Sorry for the confusion.
You can be remote. I'm just curious how it would work with all the moving parts here. It'd be hard to do on the phone, in my opinion.
I can be here at 4:30.
Okay. Everybody agrees?
4:30 okay with, is 4:30 okay with everybody?
Dan?
Yep.
Yes, it is. And we have Wareham Media online as well, too?
Yes.
Yep.
And you guys are good with that? Okay.
If there's any change, please let us know as soon as possible.
Yes.
Just so, just for clarification, it will be a lump sum amount, though, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, yep.
But the only question I still have outstanding is, or do you want me to tell you Thursday how we're going to substitute these big trees for in dwarf trees?
They're on the plan, so you have to be involved. It's a change on the plan.
Yeah, we'll be changing, simply changing the schedule that's on the plan. It won't really entail a ton of work.
The locations would stay the same, just the, just the species.
If I may, for simplification, we're trying to bring this all together quickly. Just price it with the plan that you've approved, and then you can approve the bond. They'll suggest alternatives and then.
I won't do that.
No?
No, you're talking about big money trees, in which you put the money, if the money's put up, the trees have to be changed before I move forward. Because I wouldn't put the trees up regardless. They should have never been on the plan in the first place, the trees that are on it. You guys, I think you guys should have had a letter from Bob Keating, who is a state forestry guy for 27 years. He saw this and said, this is crazy. And he said, he said he wrote a letter and sent it off this afternoon.
That being said.
And, and Bob Keating is on the board of directors of British Landings. And he said he was sorry he couldn't be here tonight. I thought Russ Yule was going to be here tonight. He was there also today.
Yeah, I never, I did not see anything. I can look, but I.
Not as a 4:30.
Not at, yeah, I was looking at 4:30, shortly after 4:30.
Oh, all right. Mr. Yule is here, and he had the letter.
And that's not the letter that Bob Keating sent to Paul here. That's.
Yeah.
These guys agree on the planting. They stamped it. If those three guys agree on the planting, they should go on. I don't know a better, a better way. Good thing.
Yeah, I think the value should be based on what's on the drawing, even if it is high. And then we know we're covered. Reading into the record, a letter from Bristol South Incorporated to whom it may concern, from Russell Yule, who's the president of Bristol South, representing the Board of Trustees of British Landing. And that will be read into the record or, and put in the, the project file online.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that the, the value be based on what we, we have, and we can discuss the revision of the trees based on this new information, well, new to us that the species was really inappropriate for the, the location and the use.
That's, that's fine.
I mean, Phil has, Phil's got a really short amount of time to work in to put together numbers, and so he needs to have something to work from. And I think that this is what he, he ought to work from, just in the name of expedience. And, and he's got this list right here, which I know is, is very much a moving target, but we got to base it on something.
Right.
So I, I think that that's what we've got to base it on, if, if he's only got a couple of days to put this together, so.
If you three guys agree on the planting, the amount, the replacement, use a number, we'll go with it.
We'll work it out.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, and we'll plan on reconvening 4:30 on Thursday, here or remote?
Agreed.
Well, I think that Julie might have to be remote and.
We're going to be in this room or we're going to be across the street?
Uh huh. Right here.
4:30.
We have an hour, and then we gotta.
Oh, we can handle it. No problem.
Ken, can we make sure that gets posted?
Yes, we'll post that.
Okay, thank you.
We're good.
Okay, I think we're good. Do we want to, just to hear from the neighbors? Do we want to hear from some of the neighbors?
Yeah, I was just wondering why, why, why you've got to put trees? Why can't you put shrubs or a little fence or something lower?
Can you come and speak to the microphone and?
This is not a hearing.
Yeah, it's not a hearing.
It's up to you to allow this or not.
We'll hear from them. I mean, there, there's some changes potentially, and, yep.
Mike, I live across the street from Danny at 58 Main Street. My wife and I, we're just wondering why you're making him put trees, which is just going to cause more problems. It's going to have leaves in the fall, block the view, slow down the movement of air through there. Why can't you have lower shrubs? I mean, I, I parked my car in one of those parking spots, and they, the lights from the headlights shot around the house, you know? So, and, and, and all the bedrooms were on the front of the house, on that house. So that, that's what concerns me. But I mean, planting trees that are going to grow that high is going to defeat everything, I think. Plus, it's, it's starving for water. It's just got a little area that wide to, to service these big trees, or whatever you're going to plant there. It seems like it, it doesn't make any sense. I mean, there, there are trees on Main Street right now that they gave a little piece of land for the trees to grow, and they planted nice trees there, but the town doesn't even take care of the trees that are there. They don't prune them. There's nobody, there's an, there's no arborist in Wareham that can take care of the trees. I mean, there were, there were two on Main Street, one in front of the Kendrick House, that pieces fell right, right in the road. Because I walk by there every day. I called the historical commission, and Angela Dunham came down, and she took, cut back all the, all the bushes that were growing on the, on the sidewalk, you know?
Thank you.
I mean, it's just a, just an observation. I mean, I have a big tree in front of my house, and I know the leaves that that sheds in the fall, you know?
They blow onto my property.
Yeah, they would go across that street. That's right. That's right.
Whatever those three guys agree on, I'm not an arborist or a landscaper, but counting on Phil, Bill, and Danny to do the right thing.
The gas line is right under you. You have the electric up there and the gas line running you down here. Great place to be digging.
Point out that, that putting shrubs there may be detrimental to sightlines for people pulling in and out of the, of the parking area and for.
The person on the car is on the end.
That it's, it's, in some ways, it's more difficult having shrubs. So I think that there's, you know, they're good in some ways, bad in others. So I think some of that's going to have to be weighed.
A little fence.
There's, there's, if there's not enough.
Let the three guys come up with an idea.
Yeah.
Did you, did you guys have a letter from Dave Menard that he sent in today? Dave Menard also sent a letter in advising.
We got nothing.
We didn't get anything.
Well, Dave's letter, I haven't seen it, but it basically says, the big trees aren't happening, fence doesn't happen over the snowplows. I, these are great neighbors and great friends. I do believe we could put some shrubs to block, because he's got the only house that's getting hit by those lights, and it hits it. So we could, because that's far enough away from the entrance or the exit, it's not going to block people's ability to see. And I'm more than willing to do any of that stuff. I just want to have that party.
Yeah, there's, I don't believe that there's any ideal solution, because I would say that shrubs are not going to provide any shade on the sidewalk or over the cars. So, and not to say that I don't hear what you're saying, but I, I think we'll, we'll entertain what your suggestion is.
The trees we have, they do a great job of shading the sidewalk.
Yeah.
He's got beautiful trees all on that side. I don't have a sidewalk on my side.
Okay.
So.
But they're shading the, shading the cars, so anyway.
All right, very good.
The three guys have heard us.
Yes.
We look forward to hearing from you on Thursday.
Yes, thank you.
Good thoughts. Yes.
Should I plan on having the, the certified bond check with me for Thursday for the sake of making this thing move fast?
Probably a good idea if you can hear from Mr. Cordero what the, you know, what his amount is that he's come up with based on what the lists are and.
Should be able to get the order magnitude in.
Exactly.
Within reason.
I think that that's right.
Okay.
Given the players, I think we'll be fine.
Yeah. That would be my guess, too. Okay?
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Danny.
Anything you might need from me with respect to the, I know you haven't had a chance to.
Yeah, I haven't.
I apologize for that as well. I know how we've been, we've been forewarned about late day submissions.
Many times.
So Bill, I guess if we have questions on Thursday, it'd be great if you could be there to field any questions, so while we digest everything.
Yeah.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Phil. Thanks, Danny.
Thanks, everyone.
Danny.
Thanks very much.
And just to tell you guys, I, I told the paper how great you guys were for putting up with me and helping me see the vision and understanding. I'd never done that before. They didn't print a word of it. I just, there you go. But I tried.
It's been a learning experience for all of us.
So I'll say thank you in person instead of in the paper. Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
All right.
We'll see you on Thursday. So item three, discussion and possible vote to, vote to recommend the appointment of Jennifer Carter, aka Jennifer Kramer, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, as associate member to the planning board.
Is she here?
Is she here?
No, I don't think, I don't think she was expected.
Okay.
She wasn't expected?
I don't know. I don't know.
I'm not ready to make the motion. I haven't ever met her before.
Okay.
No second motion.
I met her briefly to shake hands, and that was about it. So, um, so we continue it?
Absolutely.
And have her come before us. So we'd like to.
Two weeks from tonight.
Say hello and.
It could be that she wasn't made aware.
It could well be. Could well be. So.
Okay, I agree.
Motion to continue this item to the meeting of 9:09.
Second.
Second. Beat me.
You made the motion. I seconded it.
I'm not supposed to make motions, am I? Not used to that. Okay, vote?
Big B F T's eye.
Sam Corbett, eye.
Julie Moran, eye.
Jane Gleason, eye. 4:01.
Somebody's going to notify her, right?
That's her. No kidding.
Ken's going to notify you.
Um, so moving on to the next item.
Ken notified her.
Ken, can you notify her that we're looking for her to?
Of course, I'll let her know.
Okay. All right, that would be great. Thank you. Moving on to item four, discussion and possible vote to schedule a public hearing for updated rules and regulations. And I will preface this by saying that Julie and I have, have met a couple of times and are sort of wrapping our heads around this kind of gargantuan project. But we are really just getting started, and our, our goal is to come up with, to start with, to come up with sort of an outline and a, a list of priorities that we can discuss.
This evening?
No, not yet. Not yet. We're getting there. As I said, it's, it's a big, it's the elephant to, how do you, how do you eat an elephant? Yeah, no, that's not happening tonight, not even close.
And I, and I know that Carl has gotten us started with what he, he indicated were priorities based on his, out of his experience and what he's seen. We also are looking at using this opportunity to look at the rules and regulations, to look, revisit the structure a bit, also to look at some of the preliminary matters that we put in the rules and regs that we feel we could strengthen at this point, given, you know, watching how things have evolved since they were, since February of this year. And then some additions. We have, I think, we have, some of us, I know some of you, Jane included, have been, taking some notes around what, what are the rules and regulations missing based on kind of what we're seeing. So we'll put together a list of top priorities, a bit of lower priorities. But our thought is, rather than piecemealing this, to spend the extra couple of weeks to try to get a, a real good working draft to be able to present to you at the September 23rd meeting. So that, that is our aim. And I think we feel pretty confident that we can get a good working draft in front of that, everyone at that meeting, and obviously seek both departmental comment in advance of that, and then, and then seek public comment as well, obviously, at the meeting. So we're working ahead, but I think we, we feel very positive about the meetings that we've had and, and what these will eventually, the changes that will eventually make, which we think will make it more definitely easier for both the board and the public, so, as well as applicants.
Time frame?
Well, so we're, we're aiming for the beginnings of a draft for the meeting the 23rd, so not the 9:09 meeting, but the 9:23 meeting. And we're looking to get a, a framework together and draft of some of the pieces that fit into that framework.
So do you have any plans on doing anything tonight?
No.
Not tonight?
Nope. Nope. So, yeah, we've both been tied up with other things recently, so it is summer in Wareham. So, moving on to item five.
You have that in two different places.
What's that?
There's a discussion.
Oh, you're right.
Have it here and here.
Okay. Well, why don't we take care of it now?
Sure.
That's good. So I've reached out to some individual common applicants about using the viewpoint system, and they're gonna, when they get applications, move forward with it. I'm currently working with the IT department to get the website updated, to, you know, direct people, hey, new app, because this is the way you're going. So it is up and running, and we're just trial by fire at this point, see what the first application looks like.
Okay.
Yeah?
Do you have the departments, ZBA and planning board separate?
The applications are still linked, uh, under the planning office, but we'll, we'll get them separated.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any questions, Mike?
Nope.
Julie? Yeah, yeah. Julie, any questions? No? Okay. So, yeah, we're looking forward to making use of that. I think that that's going to be a big plus for everybody. And moving on to item six, which is really a reminder to everyone who has been involved in the hearings for 370 County Road LLC, project number 12-23, which was a site plan and special permit application for large-scale ground-mounted solar. And we put out a request at the last meeting for participants to provide their, what in their mind constitute findings of fact, things that they think are really important. We just want input from other participants. It's, it's a, it's a complex project, and there's a lot to consider when we're looking at these large-scale ground-mounted solar projects. And so we want to get as much input as we can in the decision that we put out. So there's more of a request that is a, a letter from Carl Schultz, our chair, that will be. that will be on the website. It will be put up, it, I don't know if it went up this afternoon, but it will be up there in the next day or so. And a request for the same, and deadlines and how to submit those findings of fact. But we just want to reiterate that invitation. That will be an enormous help to the board in putting together our decision. I don't know if anybody has any other comments from the board on that item? No? Okay. Moving on to, uh, continued public hearings. Uh, item one, project number eighty-eight dash twenty-four, Angelo McKeown, repetitive petition determination for Three Eighty-Six Main Street.
Hi, good evening.
Good. How are you?
Do you have a motion?
To?
To continue?
Maybe I do need a motion to continue the hearing.
Make a motion to continue the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mike BFT stack.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Not to continue for tonight, right?
What's that?
What was the motion for? To continue the hearing?
To continue the hearing.
Not, not your hearing.
Not your hearing.
I'm just staring like, what is going on?
No.
Okay.
So. All right, Attorney Julian Morton, One Eighty-Four Main Street. Um, I am here. I hope you all recall this is the repetitive petition. This was, um, kind of the first time of the planning board handling this. The special permitting, uh, granting authority was a zoning board, and I'm coming to y'all looking for, um, to see if there was material change. I submitted, uh, a couple of weeks ago before the deadline, um, a letter, um, with the news that we did get a one-sixth interest. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions in regard to that letter, if you have it. You know, there's a quitclaim deed, and there's also an affidavit in regards to title. Um, so we are an owner, um, now. I know that, um, the opposition had something come through. I got it today. In regards to the petition, I would just remind the board that the, the planning board per the statute is not necessarily looking at the substance. It's actually not. It's looking at is there material change, so, you know, I, I don't know if I really wanna go into the details of, of their opposition here, you know, the case law, the things I just got today. I'm happy to work on that and, and zoning if this does get approved, but, um, any questions in regards to the ownership or, I don't know?
I just had, had a question. Thank you for the certification of title as well. The, the remaining, the one-sixth interest owned by the estate of Edison Love, is that something that you are anticipating acquiring, or are you, where you're, you've settled at one-sixth with that?
We are acquiring the other one-sixth. We have a purchase and sale. And again, that is ancillary probate, um, dealing with the main probate, um, and trying to find the will and all, all, all that good stuff. So yes, we are gonna acquire that as well.
Okay. But the one-sixth interest you acquired, looks like you did by way of affidavit relative to the estate?
Yes, so because the, um, decedent had passed so long ago, um, and we do, I, I have, if you wanna see, um, certification from title company does saying this, this is- So I know the opposition said purported title, but I'm pretty much on good authority that this is, we have a one-sixth. So, because someone passed so long ago, you can't then go open a probate. It's kind of a whole thing, but I have an email, so we're able to, this is good marketable title for this one-sixth interest.
So for, for resale, you're satisfied that it's insurable title relative to title companies?
Correct. I do have that email if you would like to see that.
Okay.
So that's relative to one-sixth, then there's another one-sixth that you're in, uh, you've got a purchase and sale, so you'll be at one-third ownership?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Just to clarify.
Yep.
And you're in the process, as you said, of, of doing that, of finalizing that?
Yep, so there wasn't even a probate that was opened in Maine, so the probate had to hire in a Maine attorney. I'm getting barred there. I'm not barred there yet. And then we have to open the ancillary here, so it's actually two probates.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it is my understanding that what you stated is what I was hearing, too, that, um, we really do not have purview over, um, whether the right of way is being burdened or not, that, that is what will go to, uh, zoning, and what we have purview over is whether or not the now, uh, control of one-sixth of the property constitutes enough of a material change to allow us to, um, vote to have it, uh, resubmitted as a, a new application.
Yeah, correct. That's MGL forty-eight, section sixteen, so we're talking about not only just a material change, but upon which the conditions that the unfavorable, um, action was taken. So if you recall, there are two, um, there were three yeses and two abstaining, and in that record I had showed you that it was because of this easement question, gray area. Um, and if you were able to re-watch that, perhaps you saw, you know, it was questions that were like, well, you don't have the ownership yet and that, so-
That that was a material piece of the, the rejection?
Right, so we're just seeking an approval to allow repetitive petition to allow us then to go to zoning board about that.
I did listen to the video, that portion of it as well. Ken, anything else you wanna add?
No, I don't think so. I think it's been, uh, well, uh, presented. It, it's just the material exchange in the, uh, application, and that's all you're dealing with at this time.
Agreed. Yes, thank you, Ken.
So I think our, our purview of this is, is limited to, to that, and so, can I get a motion to accept it for-
You have one person in the public that would like to speak?
What's that?
You do have one person online that would like to speak?
Okay. Okay.
Sorry. I didn't hear that part?
We've got a member of the public who's online who wants to speak.
Okay.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes. Could you state your name for the record?
My name is Jonathan Silverstein. Of course. My name is Jonathan Silverstein. I'm an attorney in Concord with Blatman, Bobrowski, Hefferty, and Silverstein. I, uh, wrote, uh, the letter that was referenced earlier. In terms of timing, I just wanna be clear that, uh, the applicant's letter was apparently dated on the twentieth. I saw it on the twenty-second, and I responded on the twenty-third. So, uh, I just didn't want the planning board to think that I was dilatory in any way in responding to that letter. I responded to it the day after I saw it. I, I wanna correct one thing, which I think is extremely important. The planning board's purview is not limited under the statute in any way, shape, or form to the question of change in circumstances. Here is what the statute says. No appeal, application, or petition which has been unfavorably and finally acted upon by the special permit granting authority or permit granting authority shall be acted upon favorably within two years after the date of unfavorable action unless said special permit or permit granting authority, that's the ZBA, finds by unanimous vote of three members or a vote of four, of five members, or two-thirds vote of more, that specific material changes in, um, the circumstances, uh, changes in the record of its proceedings. And, this is a separate requirement, and unless all but one of the members of the planning board consents thereto. The planning board does not make a determination of changed circumstances. That is not part of your purview. All you have to do is decide whether or not you consent. You can decide whether or not to consent on any basis. It has nothing to do with the determination of change of circumstances. So, with respect to the applicant's counsel, it's simply incorrect that you cannot or should not consider the various issues that I put before you in my two letters. And I would hope that the planning board would want to consider whether or not a variance, which is supposed to be extremely difficult to obtain and rarely granted, whether or not it is appropriate for this matter to be put back in front of the zoning board of appeals, given the abject failure of the applicant to satisfy any of the criteria for issuance of a variance, and given the fact that it's gonna have such a negative impact on two longstanding families of this town who I would respectfully submit have a right to have, uh, the boards in town care about those issues. And in light of the fact that the, um, applicant clearly does not have the right to do what they're proposing to do, as I've laid out in my letter to the board. So I really hope that the board will consider the substance of the various issues that I've raised in light of the fact that the actual language of the statute is not at all consistent with what was represented to you by the applicant's counsel earlier. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I don't know either.
I'm happy to respond if the, if the chair will allow, because I feel like it's, it's sort of like he's saying I'm trying to misrepresent. This is actually coming from Attorney Bowen, the specific, what we are trying to do. This all came about, if you followed it, from us trying to go to zoning board. Now come to you. And all of this is being brought up is not that, what was in the letter, um, as far as like going through the substance of the letter and the case law and how I believe it's not correct, and you know, this is up to you to decide if you believe it was unfavorably act upon, and we have the minutes. My letter's pretty specific that there's change. We didn't own it now. Even the opposition says, yes, we do own this one-third. It's in their letter, or the one-sixth is in their letter. So, they noticed that change.
Agreed. Okay. We understand your, what you're clarifying.
Julie, do you wanna plan?
Um, yeah, I, I understand, um, what Attorney Silverstein is, um, is arguing, but I do think that under the statute that we do have the authority, uh, and the, the ability to agree or not agree to put this back to the zoning board of appeals, notwithstanding, um, and I understand your letter, Attorney Silverstein, but I feel that we do have the right to decide if we want to return this to the zoning board of appeals, notwithstanding, um, the material or specific change language. So that's-
Ken, do you have anything to add?
Ken? I think the wording of that section there that was up on the screen, uh, specifies that you're consenting to the idea that the information is, has changed that was, had to deal with the with the reason for denial. There wasn't really a, it wasn't really a, uh, the reason for denial in this case was actually that the, uh, there wasn't a super majority. There were only three votes out of, out of five in, in, uh, in, in support of the application, so it failed by the number of members that were available. So I think that, uh, if there was, if there was to be, uh, an actual representation of material change, it would be in the, in the, uh, number of, of board members who would vote one way or another.
Right.
That's a new issue.
Yeah. I was not aware of that.
Do you have a recommendation?
Ken, do you have a recommendation?
I think I think that the, uh, the decision that one-sixth ownership provides a basis for access is, is real, and therefore that this should go to the board of appeals.
Yeah, that's, that's my position as well, Ken. I agree. They, then can, the case can be made then, made with the zoning board of appeals, and they can make a decision. They can vote-
That's correct.
They can vote independently.
They're, they're the ones who heard this originally.
Including granting, including three indicating that they would approve the variance.
Have Julie make a motion.
Julie, would you make a motion?
Sure. So I, the motion would be to approve, to approve, um, the request for repetitive petition. I'm not sure. I guess it'd be a motion to refer this to the zoning board of appeals for action, for reconsideration of the application.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Julie Moran, aye.
Mike BFT stack.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Thank you.
It's okay. It's like what happened on that one. The board of appeals kicked that commute down the road.
What, what's that, though?
They kicked it down the road, basically.
The board of appeals did.
Can I speak?
Yes.
My name is Ray Robinson. I'm an abbot to this private road, which is what you're all talking about. My house is about fifteen feet from the road. The road is twenty feet wide. And all the houses that are planned, and I have no objection to those, all that traffic is going to come out on this private road. It cannot handle it.
I understand that, and I-
My lawyer says it's overburdened, whatever that means.
Yep. And I one-hundred percent appreciate that. I think that it's a matter that makes sense for the zoning board of appeals to take it up where they were the ones who were considering it before. This is a new project for us, and I-
I understand that. I, I don't object to the number of houses he wants to build. I just want it opened up onto Main Street so we don't get all the traffic. I mean, fifteen feet is not far from my, my bedroom wall. And I can assure you, if you get a white ambulance or fire truck down there, nobody is getting out.
And I think that that's, that's what needs to be part of the discussion with the zoning board of appeals. This, this came to us as, only as, uh, this came to us a while ago as a very preliminary discussion, back when the entrance was off of Main Street, and it was, it was a casual discussion. It was not an official, uh, application that we were looking at. So, I think that we did not get very far into the, the conversation, but the ZBA did, and I think that there's where it's, it's not that aged, the discussion with them. I think it makes sense to continue the discussion with them, and I would encourage you to go and, and, you know, state your case, and because I-
Several times. I, I think-
I'm sure, I'm sure that you have. I, I mean, I, I don't doubt that you have. I'm not sure that you have. I haven't been there. But I, I, I understand your concerns. But I think that it is the most prudent way to- But I understand your concerns, but I think that it is the most prudent way to move this project forward to either, to whatever end it ends up getting to in front of the ZBA, because it's an already established discussion. If that makes sense.
It does.
And it is with all due respect.
Understand. Thank you.
I would say that this is the end of our discussion on this issue.
Unless there's someone else speaking, from the citizen, a citizen, but yes, agreed.
So I think that that was the only citizen. Now we have Jillian Morton, and we have Mr. Cordero in the audience, and that's it. So I think that we have heard from, unless there's anybody online? Okay, so I think that we have heard from anybody who might be here to speak to the article, to the.
Close the hearing, we'll be in order.
So I think that we need to close this hearing.
Make a motion, we close the hearing on 8/24. No glasses.
Second.
All those in favor?
Sam Corbett, aye.
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. So the, moving on to item five, upcoming planning board schedule, and item one under that heading, report from planning office on completed applications, review with possible vote to schedule and vote to fund 53G accounts.
Ken O'Josh?
I think the goal of this agenda item is for the planning board to get some type of notification that, hey, we have an application, it's come into the office, and it's, you know, ready to be funded if you want to take that vote, before it actually comes to you. And then upon completion of it being funded, we would send it to Phil. Phil would be able to, you know, do the review that he normally does, sit down with the applicant, you know, address concerns. And then when you get to that first meeting where you're hearing it, it's not, hey, thanks for coming in.
Where's your money?
Fund the 53G. Meet with Phil, we'll see you in two or four weeks. It's, hey, you're 95% done, here are some concerns that Phil has, or they've been addressed, and we move on from there. So if I understand what the intent of this agenda item is, I would say that you have no applications that are complete pending currently.
Yeah, I think the chair's idea was that this be a standing inclusion in the agenda going forward, to remind us all to, so you could update us on any project that's come forward with those issues, so.
Right, so I think that it might want to be a standing agenda item on a monthly basis, not on a bi-weekly basis, so that once a month, we look at this list of, with new projects and the funding that is appropriate for what we anticipate the reviews are going to be and the costs are going to be. The flip side of that during that review is that we ought to be looking at projects that have been approved or disapproved, and, you know, so that they're basically off of our active project list, and return any funds that are still in a 53G account to the applicant. I know that there, from what I'm hearing, there are some accounts that are rather aged. And so it would be good to take care of those, and I understand that there was a change of banks, and so that's in the process right now, and once we get through that, then we can start to grapple with returning funds to former applicants.
Do we have an idea when that's going to be? I mean, we've been talking about it for a while. This change of banks doesn't take that long?
Well, it sounds like it's every single one of those is a separate account, and so all of those accounts need to be closed out and reestablished. And so there's a little bit to it that might be what's taking so long.
Yeah, and I can't speak to the specific issues of the new bank and how some interest was accruing, but there definitely was a discrepancy between what the treasurer-collector had and what the town accountant had. So I think we're still in the process of trying to figure out.
Iron that out.
That interest discrepancy. And I think once that's figured out, we can start moving forward. I know the idea was, you know, maybe we bring two or three of these accounts in front of the board every meeting, or, you know, whatever it may be, and we work on getting them closed out.
Try and clean that up.
Right, it's coming in front of you guys, getting the vote, and then I think it has to go to the line board after that.
So maybe for a little while, it stays on every two weeks, and we chip away at it as we can. You know, if there's nothing to talk about at one of our meetings, that's fine, but if it stays on, then we, you know, we can cover whatever we can cover. And I think that that's one good example of, and Julie's am I, looking through the rules and regulations, of putting that as an item that needs to be covered in there as just sort of a general thing for applicants to know, so.
What's the drop dead date?
Yeah, that just explains the whole process.
Right.
And both the beginning of it and the end of it, because I think it's, you know.
So internally.
Not clear.
They haven't come to an agreement yet on all accounts. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Have they come to agreement on some of the accounts?
I don't know where they're at in the process. It's not something I deal with.
And Josh, I would also ask that, look at the aged, you know, focus on the aged account to the extent they've been out there. You know, there are judicial avenues you could pursue in interpleater action, who could then, they could then determine who, if there was any question about who the rightful owner of that account, because I know there've been transfers of ownership, so I'd invite you to talk with Rich Bowen about interpleater or other legal avenues to make sure those funds get returned to the proper parties.
Hey, that's great.
Yeah, I think it's good to try and clean that up.
Can we get Attorney Bowen involved in this discussion?
Yeah, well, and I think that he may need to ultimately, because I think that there are some accounts that have just been languishing for a while, that applicants have sold the property, have passed away.
Right.
There are a whole bunch of different scenarios that we're dealing with, and how to get funds back to them, so I think it may.
Is it possible he could look at the list and determine if there's a legal way we can dispose of them? I'm not sure if that's the right word, dispose of them, but.
Or get them back to the owner of whatever.
Right, whatever we need to do.
Well, that's where I think that Attorney Bowen will need to probably get involved.
And I certainly can rely on Josh and Ken. I know that they're looking at this to identify where potentially, where and if Attorney Bowen can help.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a matter of going through the list of what accounts are still out there, and determining which ones are super-aged, and which ones we need Attorney Bowen to look at, so, yeah.
And it looks like you're making headway, Ken and Josh as well, so we thank you for that.
Yeah. Agreed. Anything else on that topic?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Moving on. Under other business, there were two letters. I don't know if there's anything that we have in liaison report or referrals, but.
Forty-eight hours?
Forty-eight hours.
You said two letters.
Oh, there were two letters.
One that you were going to write, and one that I was going to write.
We hired a new person, I thought. Given that we have a brand-new person, we'd have at least a couple of weeks to see where we are, rather than put the cart before the horse, kind of.
Right, the letter that you were going to write being one to the town administrator to.
About the conditions of the planning board.
Plead our case of the planning office being very short-staffed, and the staff that are there being overburdened, so.
Will this help enough to make it work?
Yeah, but I think that, I think giving it a couple of weeks to see how things are going and how she's making out, and.
Right, she's, my point is she's part-time, 18 hours a week, is that enough?
Right.
I just felt it was timely that we have that information available.
You don't send that letter out when we just get a new employee, that would be really bad for.
I think we'd rather find out how it works before we criticize it or not.
Right, and hopefully she won't take it as criticism of her, just a commentary.
No, 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 not at all. I just.
It's there.
Just to be clear, she is only doing conservation. She is a conservation agent.
Right.
So she's not doing planning, but it takes, I would guess it takes.
It relieves some work from me, which opens me up to do some.
Sonia doing conservation?
A who?
Sonia.
No, no.
Okay, she's just planning, okay, and ZBA.
Correct.
So she's still overburdened.
Yeah, right, right, exactly. But I think, I think there is a little bit of not wanting to send a letter like that.
Right, I mean.
The day that we get a new employee.
Exactly. I heard as a new employee, and, you know, is she going to relieve you enough? So do you have enough time to do what you need to do for the planning board, as well as conservation? Is 18 hours enough? I think we should give it a little time to find out. That's my reasoning.
Yep. And the second letter was one that I was charged with writing to, excuse me, pardon me, to the zoning enforcement officer regarding the condition that we all seem to find the Walmart Plaza, if you will, the upkeep of it has.
Yeah, this goes way back. We had a meeting, Charlie, Rowley, myself, and Carl. We were looking at Tripolte's dumpster situation, the two pieces of property are but each other. We started walking and finding out the deplorable conditions. A letter was supposed to be written to Walmart. Walmart came up for a minor improvement. We thought we could use that. We never got a response. We thought, at that point, they're coming for minor modification. They'd been notified, and we found out they had not been notified. So I agree 100%, it's deplorable. They, in my opinion, they're a violation, and we should take action, as hard action as they will recognize.
So I put together a letter, it's in draft form. I distributed it to everybody, but I didn't do it until this afternoon, shame on me. So I'll stop some time to, what's that?
Good job on short notice.
Yeah, well, so I think if you all want to take some time to look it over and let me know.
I've read it, I agree 100%.
Okay, I mean, I can make revisions, additions, if you have photographs, I'm happy to put them in.
No.
Photographs that I put in were.
The stuff that we did is a year and a half old at this point.
I looked at it as well, Jane, and I agree with your statements in the letter, violations.
So I'm guessing that it probably should go onto planning board stationary, so I can send a Word document to the office and have it put on.
I'd suggest that you also run it by Rich Bowen.
Okay. Good suggestion.
So who's going to do this?
Who'll do that?
I'm sorry?
The office will do that.
Okay.
Thank you, Ken.
I like to have a name with, we're going to do that.
That's a good idea.
That's what happened last time.
Yeah, right, exactly. Yeah, it's out in the wind. Okay, so, any other business anybody has?
Take a motion, adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Sam Corbett, aye.
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. Hi, Julie.
Thank you.